Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hattler, Mr. Courtney. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Black?
Do we have her?
Ever, are you there?
I'm sorry, aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, I muted it.
Thank you very much. Moving to the district positive accomplishments, we have some exciting updates on the BHS swim team tonight.
Coach Jeff Christensen, and he did not have the boys come in because of the weather.
Very good.
Intended, but...
And weather's kind of been our problem the last three weeks. It'd be nice when we get back to spring and summer. So, I'd like to thank you for having given me this time here tonight. We've had a really good season again this year. We started our end of the year with our JV conference, which is all the MAC schools. I think they're still going to invite us to that next year. But, we had quite a few kids on the podium, which is an accomplishment for Burlington. We usually don't get there with the PVs and the Beddors that some of their second swimmers are better than. But, so we started our end of the year with great accomplishments at the JV, correct, meet. Our record this year was four and four. We had to cancel two of our MAC conference meets, which one of them we would have won, the other one was probably going to be our closest meet of the year. We qualified two relays to state again this year, and the swimmers in those events were Jacob Morfeld, Cale Shuff, Blake Wyrick, and Wyatt Hellman. And we had two individuals qualify in two events each, which I'm not sure when the last time we've had two individuals qualify in two events. But, Blake Wyrick qualified in the 50 and 100 free, which he did last year, and Jacob Morfeld qualified in his favorite event, 200 IM and 100 breast, which he qualified in the 100 breast last year. We started our trip to state last Friday with an assembly at BHS, which was great for the support from our schools. And then we also went to the cooperating schools, since we are a shared program. So, we spent the day traveling to Danville, where we did a walk through the hall. Then we went to Sen- well, we ate lunch. Then we went to Central Lee, where they also did a walk through and recognized all the swimmers from all the schools. And then we ended our day at Holy Trinity, where they did a mini-assembly. Their principal down there had 10 reasons of, and he did a super job, and the kids really enjoy getting out and be support, being supported by all the schools. We are a shared program, and that's helped quite a bit. It's given Burlington students more competition within the pool, because when you're swimming against people that are equal or better than you, you tend to put more effort into it to improve yourself. Last year, just to give you an idea of how the numbers fluctuate, last year we had 12 shared kids and 12 Burlington kids. This year, we had eight Burlington kids and seven, I mean, eight shared kids and 17 Burlington kids. So, the success that we're seeing in the program is bringing more Burlington kids into the program as well. Like I said, I just thank you for this time, and I thank you that we keep the shared program going, because it really has put Burlington kind of back on the map as far as swimming goes. Any questions?
As we transition to a different district and different, playing different teams and other sports, how will that impact swimming?
I talked to Zach Shay, and he said the MAC schools at this point are going to keep us on their schedules. I figure over time, there might be a couple that will drop us. But, I'm looking that we'll still basically swim a MAC schedule, because for the boys' program, there's Kia Cuck is the only team that has a swim program. So, this year, we had to go and do an invite that we hadn't been invited to, because of one of the MAC schools didn't have enough teams or enough swimmers for field to team. So, we picked up an invite that just happened to be at the pool we swam district at, which helped us when we got to district, because we were familiar with the pool.
Good, good. Congratulations.
Yep, and if we picked up a couple duels against Iowa City schools, that would be over two, probably two and a half hours less traveling than to Clinton.
Are there other sports besides swimming that this change will affect?
No, not really, because swimming in Iowa, there's only one class for swimming, and that's it. All other sports was multiple classes.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work, and this is just a win-win situation, I think, for all of us.
Yes.
Well, we've got people now in all these surrounding schools that contest to how great our kids are, and how our school's not completely out of control. The best word was, one of the fathers said he was concerned at first, but now he feels like his son now has 19 big brothers. And he said, so they're going around speaking very highly at Burlington schools.
That's awesome.
It's great.
That's very, very, very good. All right, Mr. Cohen, can you top that?
I cannot top that. It is Black History Month. I was fortunate enough to be in Atlanta, Georgia about a week ago, and visit the National Center for Civil Rights and Human Rights. And I just encourage everybody to be respectful of that as the month goes on. Again, the headliner is the weather, rain, snow, freezing rain, you know, those type of things. I will be meeting, as of, as of right now, the state of Iowa does not allow schools to make days up digitally. I have petitioned, as the board knows, the education committee from the Senate, and also the education committee from the House, to speak with the Department of Education about allowing us to try to do some digital stuff. It would be a push to get some of that planned, but we are looking at that. The other thing, there was a little bit of misinformation that made its way through Burlington. We have 1,170 hours required for a school year. We have many, many extra hours built into our, into our schedule. So, we're fine, but we still can do better. Years ago, I was a junior high associate principal, like 15, 20 years ago, and no kid wants to be in school on June 10th, when it's 85 degrees outside and sunny, and then that just makes things complicated for everybody. And the other thing I worry about is, we have community members and then also staff that plan to go on vacations and stuff around the school year, and they would have by no means meant to make a reservation 10 days after the last day of school, but we could be getting there. February 2nd, the South Hill Association Dinner was very positive. We had over 20 students and staff there. We're continuing to work with the Burlington Public Library to promote summer reading, which is just right around the corner, and also we're being supportive in pre-K programs and those type of things. Normal flow, student-parent-community issues. We did a little bit of research. The Pell Grant cannot be utilized for concurrent enrollment. We did discuss, Greg Lacy and I, the possibility of expanding the extra duties at the high school for some type of a PR club, possibly some type of coaching thing. Take care of that. We have moved forward with the plans of the voted Pebble promotion, that type of a deal. I have reached out to the LMC, so we can kind of look at how things are going, what's going well, what could be better, kind of the errand sheet we used last year, same process. Close the loop on a couple of issues there. Started initial conversations with Chris Lee, which is, Chris is the Director of Des Moines County Conservation, to where we can look at some of our summer school programs with our environmental studies classes, and possibly Hound Town Day and some, some shared adventures there, which is kind of exciting, because Big Hollow is absolutely a great asset for our community. We do have our first facility meeting for the high school. The agenda's posted. It's in the, in your packet, and our, most likely our first order of business would be to discuss an RFP, to bring in an actual facility planner. We're already started with different agencies in Burlington, preparing for rag bribe. The overnight stay in Burlington, they're going to need all of our bathrooms or showers. They'll be camping in the schoolyards, those type of things. And of course, we will do everything we can to put a good face on Burlington by supporting that endeavor. And I, and I apologize. There was a lady in the paper that had, that had passed away, and she had taught for like 40 years. Does that ring in a bell?
Marilyn Sullivan.
That's it. So, when we look at these things, what, what brought this to mind is Rhonda Peeler, our current employee, had passed away from cancer. And if everybody wouldn't mind, I'd like to do a moment of silence. And I apologize for any that I've overlooked, and if there's somebody that you want to include, that's great, but let's have that moment right now. Thank you.
I'd just say a word about Marilyn Sullivan. Sullivan, her and her husband Dick were longtime community people in Burlington. I think Dick was a big in the Boy Scouts, and a lot of the Boy Scouts, as well as he was a big labor leader here in Burlington, UAW. And Marilyn was a, not only a wonderful teacher, she was really a wonderful person. I knew her really well, so I'm glad that we did that, and she was a-
Well, and she was my supervising teacher when I student taught, and I did teach with her for many years. And she continued after she retired by doing the Silver Singers for many, many years, and just, you know, really contributed a lot to the community, as well as the school.
I ran into her just a month or so before she died at a restaurant, and she was still asking me about how Burlington School District was going, and how I was liking the board again, and all that stuff. So, she is a really nice person. I can't say enough good about her.
Well, thank you. Both your testaments are, we need to remember these things and, and not forget the gifts that people have given our children in the past, because it is easily overlooked, get caught up in the business and forget what's going on. On the email, I included the copy of the letter that I sent to the Senate Education Committee, the House Education Committee, talking about the possibility of doing some stuff with tech, because that would give us an opportunity to help teachers and kids. And then also the letter that I included to, are entitled of BHS leadership. Having, not getting back to work until Wednesday last week, that kind of sums it up. Does anybody have any questions?
The makeup days, is there any chance we could use a Saturday to make the makeup? Was that something that comes in the mix, or not?
That is, that is. We talked about this morning, during the cabinet meeting, we talked about half-days on Saturdays, two Saturdays a month. That would be two days made up. We talked about 15 minutes before the, in the morning, 15 more in the afternoon. I would never do an hour for kindergartners, because we tacked an hour on school, instead of the kindergartners getting on the bus at 4:00, they're getting on the bus at 5:00. If you did two hours at 6:00, that's ludicrous.
So, the 15 minutes might work really late a half-hour day?
15, 15, half-hour day, you see? So, they want you to hit 5:00, that's a, that's a day.
Sounds like a really good thing to look at.
Well, Mr. Johnson has been tasked with surveying the staff, you know, and parents, and getting an idea of what they think. And Wednesday, we meet and talk about digital stuff. We do something digitally. There is one school that I know of so far, Estraville, who has three digital days already built in to their schedule. So, there's plans in place when they, when the snow day happens, the kids know to log on.
Don't even worry me about that. They don't take, they don't, not everybody has their Chromebooks at home, do they? How's that going to work? How would that work? Not every parent has a computer. At my house, it would have been fine, but not every parent has a computer, and how would that work?
And this, and I can explain that to you later. Now, it might not be the time, but there's Estraville, actually, they're little guys, there's, those plans don't include computers at all. It includes, you know, the reading, the math, and those type of more traditional activities. So, it's an opportunity where we can look at, because realistically, when you look at Chromebooks, by the time you consider our tech department, our tech director, the cost of the Chromebooks, the maintenance of the Chromebooks, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars annually on this, and can we use it a little more effectively? And this might be the opportunity to jump at that. And it might not either, because as of right now, again, the state of Iowa says we can't do it.
We can't use Chromebooks?
We cannot use Chromebooks. Or, you can't do anything to make up snow days digitally. But, there are schools, there are probably 5,000 kids in Iowa that do concurrent enrollment for college, and it's all 100% online. Every concurrent class a kid takes at Central Lee is online. Iowa Learning Online through the AAAs is an opportunity for schools to develop on, so we're doing, they're letting us do online learning for entire classes, a complete college class, and all we're asking is, can we do this for two or three days?
Plus, every legislator has a computer on their desk, and the whole place is run digitally, so why would they care if we did that?
Right. And then, and the other thing, to your point, I talk to a lot of kids. They come up to me when they're back for Christmas, you know, whatever, they stop me in Iowa City, graduate and undergraduate, and almost regardless of what program they're in, there, it involves an online portion of either posting your, your work, reviewing other people's work, posting your thoughts on, on somebody else's paper, submissions, of, you know, all that type of stuff. So, actually using technology would better prepare students for the current reality in the, in the post-high school academic life. And the same thing is true with your trades unions.
Yep.
You know, a lot of that stuff is digital. So, we're not doing anybody any favors by saying it's okay over here, but it's not okay over here.
I think that we're smart to try to do something, to figure out, because I think you're right. If we get into June, half those kids are going to stay home, and, and nobody's going to be, the teachers won't be happy. Nobody's happy if you go that late. I just like to see us-
Right.
Possibly a combination, so that you can hit all those different learning types and situations. I think that would be a good idea, too.
Right.
Is this something that you'll bring a recommendation to us, and we'll go on, or will that be just something that the administration decides?
Well, I, I don't think that, that it's a burning hot hole. But, I know that, I know that, like I said in the letter to the staff that I shared with you, I don't know. I'm an old, older person. I don't know how, I don't know what, you know what I mean? But, but we have people in our staff who do have these skills.
Right, right.
And we, and we can do this.
I mean, you're an older person. You have to do a computer, don't you?
I do, but I remember in our school, first had computers in high school.
Yeah.
And we weren't allowed to touch them. I still typed on the typewriter, and you had, "Ding!" You know what I mean, and pushed it back.
So, basically, we'll just, we'll just figure something out, and then, will that, try to be, you'll try to get that done, I assume, in a-
Well, probably, we'll probably-
Passion.
Well, when you look at it, if we're going into June anyway, if we had, if we were ready to try something a couple days in May, and then, I prefer the middle of April, and then that would give people a two-week window to get it done. And then, so, we have from now to the middle of April to plan for a couple days of instruction.
But, you probably will add on at least a day or two, anyway.
Well, we, when, when, we have more than 1,160 hours in our calendar now. So, we do have fluff, and I won't call it fluff, because that's not the appropriate term, but we do have extra built in.
Oh, that's good.
You know, so-
Okay.
At the same time, we put extra in, because we felt it was important to have instructional time with kids.
Well, right. And with the trimester thing, I know there's concern that there's not enough time, anyway, and then by limiting it would be even worse.
Correct.
I know that the board doesn't have a decision in this, but I hope that you'll surprise them.
Oh, yeah. Well, certainly will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'll tack on that, that I appreciate, and I've seen you do this before, and I admire that. You're not, you're not afraid of firing off a letter to Des Moines on an issue. And this, and you, I thought your letter was well-written and well-done, brought up some good points, and hopefully, they'll stop and think about it, because if we are doing this online learning elsewhere, why can't we do it to make up some time? And perhaps, at your next superintendent's regional meeting, everybody else would come on board, and you could draft a group letter or something. But, I appreciate you doing that, because somebody's got to wake it up and say, hey, this is antiquated, for lack of a better term.
Correct.
Maybe we can, can get a little more modern with that.
Yeah, I, and I felt, and to make it plain clear, I felt, I didn't feel bad, but I knew that I could be causing a little heartache for the director of the Department of Education. So, I did email him a copy of the letter first, and I did explain to him why I was sending it. Now, he did ask me, you know what I mean, but, so I didn't blindside him.
Right.
I said, hey, Dr. Weiss, this is, this is what I'm sending, and this is why I'm sending it, because this is time-sensitive, and every day that I don't move forward, it could be more difficult on my teachers and children. So-
Yeah, that's why you get the big bucks.
Yeah, he does. I don't know why he makes it.
He really does.
Does he? Good. Yep.
And I'm going to add that just because you were out of town, did not mean that the responsibilities of making early out or cancellation decisions went away. So, Mr. Johnson did a nice job of keeping our staff and students safe while you were, you were gone to warmer climates. So, thank you for that.
This is over. It sounds like it's going around for another month.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, guys, let's go.
All right.
Retirement applications, you have them in your packet. My recommendation is that you prove them as presented.
Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll second.
Ms. Hattler, again, Mr. Courtney. You still have this, Deb? Her header?
Yeah, from there.
Okay, very good. Any comments on the retirement?
I just want to say that I see a lot of names of people that I've worked with, that have made excellent contributions to the district and have impacted many, many students. And I just want to acknowledge all of them, and I think that they will be difficult to replace, and wish them the best, because like I say, we are losing a wealth of talent, and they're going to be missed.
They're always difficult to replace. That's why I hate early retirements. I hate them. Those good people.
It's a very difficult thing. And Ms. Hattler, I asked Pat, what's the number of years? And it's 448 years of experience in the, in the support staff pool alone.
Yes.
So, I do hope support staff are appreciative that we did this. It's not something that has happened very often in my time on the board. And I hope that, that they enjoy their retirement, and they will be very much missed, as will certified staff who chose to retire as well. So, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations very well. Moving on to the BHS PE waiver. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. In your packet, you have a copy of the accreditation waiver for the Iowa Department of Education in the area of high school and physical education. This is an annual waiver that we have to submit. It's related to our trimester schedules. It requires, requires us to offer, requires students to take PE every semester, and since we're on trimesters, we have to put in a lovely waiver. It's in the packet for your approval, and I would ask that you approve it as presented.
So, move. Mr. Courtney, thank you. Ms. Hattler, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just have a question with the P E here, but I know, I know, do they have once trimester a year? Is that what the plan is for the, for the P E? Or do they have, or are we completely exempting it?
No, 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 it's not, it's not exempting students from taking P E. It's an exemption for the district from the state accreditation requirements, because, and it's really, waiver's a bad word. It's really more of an exemption, a change of language for us, because we're on the trimester schedule.
So, do we, so we have, but the kids would, what, like one try a year or something like that? That was my question.
Take it two tries, I think.
Two tries a year, okay. That's what my question was.
Of course, the full year. Yeah, so they take it two tries to get the full year's worth of credit, as opposed to a full year's worth of P E, which is what's in the law.
That's what my question was.
Yep. And what you're talking about can happen, and it is an Iowa law, and parents can exempt, remove a child. I know some children keep track of running outside their regular time, that way they can take more academic classes.
I see.
But, they're two different things.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Stay where you are. Mr. Johnson also has the Behavior Intervention Specialist job description.
Through a number of conversations at the administrative level, we've proposed to add a new position called Behavior Intervention Specialist. This is to address concerns in the area of challenging behavior, specifically for students who have special needs and special education in the area of behavior, but also could be a position that you, we hope to utilize to support social-emotional learning and challenging behaviors and supportive behaviors throughout the curriculum. This is a special education-funded position, because I'll be the majority of that person's, these people's work. We propose adding two FTE, one, ideally one more elementary, one more secondary, but there'd be a lot of flexibility in that depending on who it is that we're able to hire. So, again, this has been, we hear a lot of feedback from our staff. A part of our TLC survey that we did, when we were doing our TLC needs assessment, indicated that staff were looking for a lot more assistance in this area. While we weren't able to fill that with TLC, we can fulfill them in this area through this means. So, I'd ask that you approve these new job descriptions for these new positions.
So, so move. Let's get it, we have to.
Oh, yeah, support. I have a question.
Okay.
I see it's five, step one plus $5,000. What's that salary come out to?
It's about 90,000. Well, the salary itself is around 60, 50, 60.
Mr. Johnson, do you have that?
Yeah, we estimated salary benefits to be 90,000 per-
For that position?
Yeah, so a total of 180 for the two positions, based on an average.
Do we need any help with that, or is that all us, or we, any help from?
It's, it's all our special funding, so.
Okay. And possibly at risk.
Possibly at risk. Right now, we've been running up a positive balance in our special education, so we think this is a good utilization of those funds.
Yeah. And the other thing, when, earlier this year, you were talking about the, some of the behaviors that the teachers have been concerned with, because when Mr. Johnson mentioned that it was conversations at the administrative level, I would venture to say that it was conversations at all levels. And when we, when we look at this, I contend, and I will contend this until you carry me out of here or I walk out, kids would do great if they were in our class every day on time and were respectful, because we have great teachers. And what this is, this is a sincere and honest attempt to create a pre-K 12, Curative Development and Behavioral Strand, that will increase the, those expectations. And this is something that we've heard we've needed from, again, all conversations.
I'm not going to disagree with it, but I will want to go back to, build on Mr. Courtney's question. So, the $5,000 is the 10 extra days beyond the teacher contract?
It's a stipend for that, plus the additional training responsibilities. In the job description is an example of this, that this, these positions will serve as trainers for our non-violent crisis intervention training model. So, there's some, you know, stipend pieces that go into that as well. And that's, and you note that that's a minimum salary.
So, if I take the 5,000 divided by 10, I get $500 a day. If I take $500 a day times 197 days, you've got a salary of $98,500.
It's a stipend amount, not a per diem. It's meant, it's not meant to serve as a per diem, it's meant to serve as a stipend. And that's something that we kind of had some conversations around for what we thought would make sense for this level of position and the type of work we're asking it to do.
And so, at that level, it's, to me, sounds like an almost administrative-level position. Am I mistaken?
It's not administrative.
It's certainly administrative pay.
So, if you look at the, the minimum qualifications that we're looking for in this, we're looking for somebody with a master's level or greater degree in a counseling or behavioral sciences area, so, but also with a BOE license. So, we're looking for a, you know, somebody with a strat 2BDA, school psychologist, school social worker, school counselors with certified training. We're preferring somebody who has a certified, a board-certified behavior analyst, a BCBA certification, which is a national certification around behavior management and behavior analysis, special education planning. So, we're really hoping to be able to recruit somebody with a lot of specialized skill in this area.
To speak a little more English for the people at home, and some other folks, a teacher-leader.
Yep.
How many teacher-leaders do we have in our district?
What, you're talking about the TLC positions?
I am talking about TLC.
Currently, it's 14 FTE, next year will be 11 FTE.
Okay. On average, what's a teacher-leader make?
Their additional stipend is- Their additional stipend is 15.
Just on average, just, yeah, we don't have to get into the stipends and the, just.
The minimum's the average Joe on the street. I just wonder how much money he's making.
Yeah.
Their average salary is that we were ballparking was, I think, 85,000 is what we were working on, the average salary and benefits as we were working on. We looked at roughly 85, so this is in line with that.
And the TLC spots, there's no additional funding for those anymore? Because there was at one time.
No, it is not part of the school funding formula. It's built into the formula.
And so last board meeting, we talked about the changes that the TLC committee proposed for that, and you guys, and you approved the new job descriptions for those 11 FTE. We needed, that's, they're both categorical funds, but two different categories of funds. So that TLC money, we had to cut some positions there because of the reduction in our, in our allocation of that fund, but this is an area in our special ed funds where we have some, you know, we've traditionally had some additional funds available to us, so we were trying to come up with a way of being able to utilize those funds to address the need that we know we had.
And having those extra funds is guaranteed for the foreseeable future?
You know, it can vary from year to year, but over the last five years, we've run a positive balance. Last year, a very significant positive balance. The projection for this year is that it'll continue to be positive, so even though our certified enrollment keeps going down, our special ed week keeps going up, so. So those funds are pretty consistent.
And I don't wanna come across like I don't support the job. That's not my point. That's not at all, I'm just, it's, we're paying somebody theoretically, this position is, you know, administrative level pay.
The 90,000 is based upon, and what we looked at was an MA stepped in, was just kind of escalated. That pay is 57,000, and there's 23,000 in benefits is what, it's a certified.
23,000 what?
In benefits.
Sure.
Yeah, the, the health insurance is killing our retirees.
It's killing everybody.
It's killing everybody. So when you think about, it's, it's a lot of it, but probably a third of it is health insurance.
Yep.
So they would just be on the level of TLC?
Basically, they're.
I mean, as far as classification.
As far as salary and benefits and kind of job responsibilities, it'd be very similar to a TLC position.
And to be honest with you, this should take some tasks away from perhaps principals, because they can deal with those repeat offenders that need to have certain plans.
That, it, it should.
In theory.
Help us better address student, any student with challenging behavior, help us better put into position plans and supports.
But especially those ones that have the chronic.
Absolutely.
Ones.
And I also think, and another thing to think about in this is supporting our, our new special education teachers.
Absolutely.
We have a lot of new special education teachers, especially in the areas of behavior and areas of high, there's a lot of high turnover in those areas. So this is a position that I also believe will help us build and support the teachers in their specialized programs.
I think it's, I think it's a great use of funds. I really do, really do.
I agree. I think it's a great move.
I have one other question. At this level, the, the experience that we're looking for here, in your experience, or maybe yours, Greg, well, how many years will probably this person have at teaching? Any way to guess that, or?
There's really not. So, for example, we could hire a school psychologist or so, social worker straight out of their master's degree, straight out of their graduate program with just a few years of experience, or we could hire a very experienced special education teacher with 20 years of teaching BD and a lot of extra support around that, that, you know, so it really, it could be anywhere on the gamut.
There's no, nothing, no rule you can go by.
I can't say there'd be a rule thumb to it.
So will this be open to our staff first, before you?
It would, it, we would post internally, and it would be available for staff, but it's, but would also be an external post as well.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I, I said I'm not against the position, I just wanna make sure we're prudent in, in what we're paying, so I can justify it. I still think it's perhaps, you know, a little on the higher side than, but if we, Craig says we have the money, we've typically had the money, and I think it will yield some benefits, because this is an area that the board has, we have talked about, Mr. Cohen, you're correct. It's something we have discussed, so I don't wanna be, you know, overly negative, I guess, about something we're trying, we're trying to do. I just wanna bring up the fact that that's administrative level pay, essentially, so.
Well, it is a lot of money, but if we get the results the superintendent's hoping for, it'll be well worth that money.
Worth everything.
So I'm in favor.
And I think the teachers, teachers are gonna feel some support, which, you know, they need, they need.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll have a motion in a second, hurry. Any further discussion? Mr. Brass, welcome to the meeting. Do you have anything you wanna add to this?
No, I agree.
Okay.
I think I agree. We'll see how the vote goes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, motion carries.
Should tell Heather she can go watch TV and have a go at it.
Greg, I'm not sure how this works, but with the board's permission, I would like to hand the meeting over to Mr. Brass, since he's now in attendance.
Okay. Well, the next item on the agenda then is the SCC joint enrollment agreement.
Yeah, the board approved an agreement with SCC after the September 24th meeting. They have since given amendment to that agreement, basically addressing not this year, but the following subsequent four years, in which they, in essence, reduced the rate for the cost per credit hour for those classes taken on, at SCC campus. At the end of the four years, they're, they're getting back to, to the end rate that they were targeted to get to in the 22, 23 school year, but it is a slight reduction for those interim years to get there. So looking at, based upon the number of SCC classes that we've typically taken, it will produce an estimated savings of anywhere to, you know, $200 to $500 per year for the concurrent enrollment classes at SCC. So we're recommending that the board approve this amendment to the agreement.
Mr. President, I move approval of the SCC amended agreement as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hatterburg. Are there any questions or comments? That's a $500 total?
Yeah.
Or 500 per student? 500 total.
Total.
Okay.
It's 500 per student, I'll have to go back.
All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll go to item number seven, broken centrifuge contract.
And just the renewal of the previous agreements we've had with Broken Centrifuge to broadcast the graduation ceremony at the stadium, so at the same price as that we've seen in the previous years.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move.
Hatterburg? Second. Mr. Courtney? Any discussion? I think it's great that we do this. Maybe someday we can get to where our students and our self-forth are doing it. I know we're working on that one, but I think it's great to, that we're doing this. All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, VHS yearbook agreement.
Mr. Kane is unable to make it tonight, so he asked me to address this for him. Johnston's has come in with a three-year contract, which is better than the one he'd had with the previous vendor. They offered incentives to work with, including technology portions of the, that will help with the development. They've also, it's, it's huge, any book that's not sold, we don't need the money, they do. So a lot of positives for going with Johnston's. So Mr. Kane's recommendation is that we, you approve this, this as presented.
I move we approve the contract as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hatterburg. Any questions? Comments? I just wanna clarify that that is $18,220 on the written information I received. I had to follow up with Greg, because I just wanted to make sure what those numbers were, so.
That is correct.
And that's the total for the three years? Yes. Okay.
Oh, it's per year.
Oh, per year. Per year. Ah, we better write that in here. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, AmeriCorps Substance Abuse Prevention Program Contract.
Yes, this is basically an expansion of the, of the contract that we've had with AmeriCorps. They subsequently have some additional funding. We're currently at a, at one and a half position, so they're opening that up, expanding the staffing to us to two full-time positions. There is no cost to the district, as they cover the cost for those staffs.
Wow, okay. So we just have one currently?
We have one and a half right now.
Okay. Is there a motion in this regard?
So move.
Mr. Courtney moves to approve, Ms. Hatterburg or Mr. Kendall?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 10, Resolutions Continue Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, also known as PEPAL.
Okay, I recommend that the form of ballot be approved, and the election called on the question of continuing to levy a voter-approved physical plant and equipment property tax, which must be approved by the board and submitted to the county commissioner of elections at least 46 days prior to the election.
So move.
And I would like, I was gonna say, that's, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Thank you, Ms. Hatterburg. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion or question on this?
To make this clear, this is no additional taxes for the people of DeWine County in this district. This is just continuation of what we've had for 20 years. So it's no extra tax.
No extra tax.
Desperately needed by every school system I know of in the state.
In the state of Iowa.
It's what we use to keep everything going, and it's an important, it's important, and as important people don't get in their head that their taxes are gonna go up because they're not helping.
That is 100% absolutely correct. Their taxes are not going up.
Not because of us, maybe somebody else, but not because of us.
Correct.
And Mr. Courtney, if I'm wrong, but this supports our ongoing maintenance of the facilities we keep in place.
Absolutely. As Director Courtney mentioned, the districts had this for the previous 20 years. Districts can levy up to $1.34 per thousand. We've typically only asked for 67 cents, so we're levying less than what the maximum that we're allowed to. So very, very critical, you know, as, as the community has seen, that the advantage that those funds have made in, in keeping our district, you know, we're very proud of our facilities and equipment, very, very nice for the district, so it's in the community. So it is extremely critical that we renew this, this tax. And as you mentioned, it is not a new tax, it would not be an additional tax. It's just a continuation of a tax that we've had for 20 years.
Is this total, Greg, about the amount that we usually collect, around about $700,000?
It's based upon our evaluation, but that's, you know, as the valuation changes a little bit, that's real, real close, so.
Any other comments or questions?
We need a roll call.
We do need a roll call, though, so.
Well, let's have a roll call, then. Director Brass? Yes? Director Brick?
Yes.
Director Courtney?
Aye.
Director Hatterburg?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
Okay, so as, with that, I'll read the resolution, then. President declared the resolution adopted as follows. Resolution ordering election on the question of continuing to levy a voter-approved physical plant and equipment property tax, whereas this board has determined that an election should be called on the question of continuing a levy, to levy a voter-approved physical plant and equipment property tax. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Directors of the Burlington Community School District and the County of Des Moines, State of Iowa, that an election is called with the qualified electors of the Burlington Community School District and the County of Des Moines, State of Iowa on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. Following proposition is approved, and the secretary is authorized and directed to submit and file the proposition for the ballot with the Des Moines County Commissioner of Elections in the next 46 days prior to the election. And we said, shall the following public measure be adopted? Proposition and it's yes or no? Okay? Motion carries. We're good to go on that one. All right. Do we wanna do board communications now, then? Let's go ahead and do that. Heather, do you have any board communications you'd like to share?
I do not.
Okay. Ms. Hatterburg?
Well, I would just like to thank all those that are going above and beyond the duty for all the school cancellations, the maintenance guys, the administrators who are out early trying to keep everyone safe and making those tough decisions, and so thank you all for keeping everyone safe, and we'll just hope that the weather gets better.
All right, thank you. Mr. Courtney?
I do. The, I just, I've been watching, watching this in the news. The, most of my lifetime, measles, measles have been eradicated in the United States. There hasn't been any measles. Now, there are epidemics in something like 11 states. I might be off a little bit. This has happened because parents, somewhere or someone decided that a measles shot could possibly maybe in some extreme event cause autism. That's never been proven, and every scientist that, that I've seen reports of, and I'm by no means an expert, says it, it isn't true. It just isn't true. We're exposing floods now in people to a disease that we don't have to expose them to. I don't know, and I think in this district, they can opt out, just like every other district in Iowa.
That is correct.
We oughta be doing, we oughta be stopping that. If I was in the legislature, I'd be trying to move the bill tomorrow, stop this. This is absolutely ridiculous, and parents, I have a great granddaughter that, that her mother thinks that this is, they don't go to Burlington, her mother thinks that she's gonna get autism. This is ridiculous. She's not gonna get autism from this, but she could get measles. It's a terrible, terrible thing, and if you're a parent that's watching on TV, or reading this in the favor tomorrow or something, then call me up, I don't care. But you're wrong, and I'm right, and the scientists are right, and we're all in to fix this. This is ridiculous. But it's not the measles anymore. I have measles, I have monks, probably a lot of people in this room, but I have measles, monks, what, a chickenpox thing, I have all that stuff. But you don't have to have that anymore. And it's ridiculous, and in my view, that, well, in my view, you're, that's one part of you, probably a lot of great people, but that's one part of your primal duties that you're not doing right if you're not getting your kids vaccinated, into my sermon, but I feel very, very strongly about this.
And there's, there's also a, some polio-type thing coming back.
It's all gonna come back, Pat, and everything. It's all gonna come back. Next thing I know, they're gonna plague or something. These things are eradicated, they're gone. And, and people are saying, oh, I might get autism. Autism's a terrible thing. I've had some contact with that in my own personal life. It's a terrible disease, but it's not caused by the measles shot. If somebody can prove they're wrong, I wish they did. I wish they'd do it nationwide and worldwide and say autism on, on one, like, 1% of, I don't know, it's a really small percentage, maybe one or two kids per 100,000. I think it's well worth it to save, to save the rest of the kids from getting measles.[1631.83] And the other thing is, since you brought it back up and put me back on my soapbox, if you have, it, it's also, the, the words depend on herd mentality. Most kids, most parents get their kids vaccinated, so it won't be measles, so everything's fine. Except that, more than your parents are not doing it. So the herd mentality isn't working as well, and if you, if a mother and father opt not to vaccinate their kid, and that kid gets to be six or seven years old, and a baby comes along, that baby is liable to get measles from that kid. So you've exposed little babies now to this disease, it's, it's just absolutely ridiculous. Measles wasn't fun, by the way, I had it, and it wasn't fun, but as I remember real well, and it wasn't fun, but for me, it was just a disruption of a week or two from school, which probably was okay with me at the time, but for, for people that are pregnant, or babies that are born, or young kids, it's a death, it could be a death sentence. Now I'm really done, I promise.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Mr. Kendall?
Um, a few weeks ago, I think, there was a seven-minute video that appeared on Facebook and on the district's website about our district. And if you haven't seen it, you need to go watch it. It is very, very, very well done, and it is an exceptional video that touts some of the greatest things our district's doing. I was so happy to see that video, and it just highlights many, many things in a very good way. It's very well put together, and it just, it, you, it watches well, it views well, and it, it flows well, it's, it's very well done. So I was very proud of that, to see that happen, and I'd like to get that out as many places and ways that we possibly can, because it definitely talks about things that you may not realize our district's all about, and how we care for students that you may not know. So I was really happy to see that. Tonight, we approved the PEPL election, and, and maybe we could get something on our website and something on Facebook, talking about the importance and critical things that PEPL, like Greg alluded to. You know, we put a boiler thing in at the high school, and hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had the money for, we had to do it, and we had the money because of PEPL. And if we didn't have PEPL, we got to find that money somewhere. So maybe we could put something together in the next few weeks to outline the advantages and why that's such a critical thing, and it's nothing new. That's a great point, Mr. Courtney, this is nothing new, we've already been doing this, we're not asking for anything new or different, we just want to continue.
Yeah, that, that, the PEPL push is already there, we're not increasing anybody's taxes, the, the money, if we had to take that money out of general fund, that'd be about 13 to 15 teachers' jobs.
Yeah, so maybe we can work something up, you know, to get out on the Facebook page and our, our, out to the PTO groups and the, to get the word out as to how incredibly essential that is for not just our district, any district, wherever you're at watching, support your district's PEPL. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Uh, thank you, Mr. Courtney, for bringing that up about the vaccinations. I know a lady here in town in her 80s who fought all the way up to Washington DC through PTO to get vaccinations to be commonplace, so that we would protect our kids from these things. Uh, it might be debatable, I think I turned out all right from the MMR shot I had.
It was debatable.
But debatable. But I had it, and I didn't get, I didn't get measles, I didn't get mumps, I didn't get rubella, so I did have chickenpox, but that was before the vaccine. And I survived that too. But thank you for bringing that, it was very important. Uh, and, and thank you, Mr. Kendall, for bringing up about the video, the youth nip by Cassie Gers, it was very good. It was on YouTube, so if you're not a subscriber to the Burlington Community School District YouTube channel, you should be, you'll get an email. These meetings are also now on YouTube, and, and I was in, couldn't be at our meeting last, last meeting, but I was able to watch the whole thing on YouTube after the fact, and that worked out really well. So we have access through a variety of means now. Uh, and I want to congratulate our, our boys basketball team, they won their third game in a row at home, and, and they've done well. I really love to see them fight to the end, whether they win or not, they fight to the end, and I like to see that. And so our, our kids are really making a change, they're, they're, they're improving, we've got a lot more interest in our sports in that area, and it's, it's really neat to see. And if you haven't been to any of our basketball games, many of them have been canceled because of weather, but there are several games this week, this weekend, we've got a lot of opportunity to support our Greyhounds. Uh, and I want to, just a shout out to all of our teachers, our coaches, our, our support staff that help keep things rolling, you know, day in and day out, even with the weather changes that we have. I know it's frustrating and difficult and treacherous out there, but thank you to everyone. What's, what do we got here?
State wrestling, Duncan Del Zell.
Oh, Duncan Del Zell and Preston Terry, did they, how did they do at state wrestling?
Well, the state wrestling starts Thursday.
Oh, we support them there, absolutely.
We got, we got two Greyhounds representing Burlington, Duncan Del Zell and Preston Terry.
Mm-hmm. And the wrestling meets are really fun to watch, if you haven't been to one, you really should go see it. Uh, those kids really work hard out on the mat, so, well-run. All right, with that, at this point, we will take about a five-minute recess before we go into a closed session.
Can I bring up something?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the choir conference has been moved, and it will be Monday and Tuesday, our next board meeting, Monday. I was hoping that we might be able to start the meeting an hour early.
Well, we can, we can, we can try to make that work on the schedule.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, because that's our senior sons to have an answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for reminding us, Heather. Appreciate you calling in tonight, too.
No, no problem.
Yeah. All right, with that, we'll just, we'll take a five-minute recess before we go into our closed hearings here. Thank you, everyone.